All the order, the special city council meeting, February fifteenth at six P M. Pledge of allegiance, all rise.
The public, which stands patient, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, all councilors are present besides Andrew LaFrance is online. And Jeanette Santiago excused. Okay, I have an agenda here, I'm looking for an approval of tonight's agenda. Have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is the revised.
This is the revised agenda with added public comments for items not on the agenda.
Still moved.
First by Councilor Miller, any seconds?
Second.
Second by President Grayson, any discussion question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do have public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you want to speak, please sign in with Isaac along with any written testimony. Like to keep that to five minutes, do you have any for tonight?
Yeah, one.
Okay, so items on agenda, please state your name and city and we'll keep you to five minutes, please, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sherry and I'm a resident of Scott Pus. I'm speaking tonight, and this is something I learned from last meeting. I'm speaking tonight as a resident. I, you know, I wasn't involved in politics and civic matters until the last few years of my life, unfortunately, but that's what it is. And raising kids and different things, it didn't happen. I have been going to the city councils in every single city in our county for the last about five months. Actively engaging with the mayors, the city council members, their city administrators, and the city planners very much. And just finding out, you know, what you, what your guys' role is in our community, what our role as residents is also in the community. And I've gone to all the school board meetings, planning commissions, etc. I just wanted to share with you guys and ask you, basically, how is it, because I don't know the answer to this. How is it that our city council, our, you know, city planners, administrators, how would they like the public to engage with them? And I ask this because I started coming to Scott Pus's city council meetings during the Buxton hearing. And there was a lot of dang people opposed to it. I didn't hear very many that were for it, except the people building it. As a resident of coming into Scott Pus and coming into this, you know, city council and looking at this, I was like, nobody wants this. And that is what I hear, and that's what I see, and that's what I observed. But that did not do one thing. My standpoint, it didn't do one thing to tell anyone, engage with anyone to say, this is not a good move for our city. From my personal perspective, with being so engaged in these matters, I have come up quite frustrated. It's an emotional thing when you spend your free time to go to different things like you guys do. I know you're not paid, you guys. And I admire that, and I also thank you, Megan, all of you, for what you do on the council and the thought and the process that you have to go through. And I think that my biggest just point of what I want to make to you guys is, there are people that want to be engaged. You need to be heard, you need to feel like we're heard. We need to feel like what we say matters in the grand scheme of things. So when I come and I'm holding a sign, it's because I'm pretty dang passionate about it. And I just want to know, you guys, how to engage the best, how to be heard. And that's, you know, I went to the, I went on the website for the city of Scott Pus. I was trying to find, you know, how do I find the process of an ordinance passing? And it wasn't very clear. It was, you know, like, what's a second reading and first reading, and what's the, you know, different things like that? And it came down to, what are the Oregon statutes? I couldn't find the Oregon statutes on this. I looked up ordinances and it talked about nothing related to me asking how an ordinance is passed. So I looked on the city, you know, of Scott Pus's website, looking for these details of how the process goes and how I can be involved in that process, and it's very unclear. And I know that there's a lot of people that want to be engaged in their community, but they don't know what to do. And then when they do, it doesn't really make much of a difference. So I, I'm just speaking from a lot of just going to the different cities in our county and hearing from people and asking them why they're engaged and why they're not engaged. And those are the answers I get. And I just want to share them with you guys because I feel, I mean, this is my hometown, it's where I raise my children, it's where my children, you know, may live, I don't know. And I just want it to be the best it can be. So when I engage, I want to feel like the payoff, I want to feel like there's engagement and not empty words. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment? One thing, I will talk to you at a later time. But can I, I will once speak on the one thing on engagement. I do, I do, I think I ran on that, looking for engagement in the community. And I'm trying to learn that as well, trying to find out what is the best way to engage your community, to get the most bang for a buck, to best engage them. And I'm trying to work on that and learn. And there's a lot of opportunities for engagement, a little bit here, a little bit there. So that is something that I'm trying to learn myself, because I do want an engaged community, the more information, the better. So I appreciate that point and speak to you about the other topic as well. Sir Miller?
I'd just like to say, Sherry, thank you, your thoughts represent what a lot of people are feeling. And it's not quite as simple as what it seems to be on the surface. And so I, you know, I do appreciate your comments and I, I too will try to get back to you and give you a little more insight from my point of view.
Sir Miller?
Thank you, Sherry. I just want to point out that we, I know that I appreciate the engagement and we do hear everything that comes in front of us. Being engaged and impacting decisions is kind of two different things. We have to first consider the law and the legal requirements that we're faced with first. So I can understand that it may not always seem like we're taking what the public has to say seriously, but I know that I am. But me, you know, we take an oath, we have to first comply with the law, and I know that that's not always clear to the public. Sometimes we get a lot more information on that. But if there's ever a question about that, I think any of us would be willing to engage with you or whoever to explain it better. But we certainly don't want anybody to feel like we're not listening or we're not engaged, because I don't, I don't think that's the case. We definitely hear what the community is saying. And sometimes depending on what the process is, some of the processes, there's legal requirements too. So sometimes we can't always comment and we may have to have the poker face, but that's just because we have to. It's not because we're giving you the cold shoulder or anything, that's, that's not what we want to do either, but sometimes we're just have to as a matter of a legal issue. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There is a comment online from Mr. Orem, I'm not sure if he's a party to, he is?
That's husband of the appeal. For public comment, okay.
I wasn't clear, I wasn't able to determine whether or not he wants to make public comment.
Were there any other public comments, notices from anyone that's items not on the agenda?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
I do believe we will be able to maybe speak during the So moving on to old business, ordinance nine ten and ordinance relating to massage businesses, creating Scott Pus Municipal Code, Chapter five point two zero, massage facilities. We are in our second reading, hand it over to Assistant City Manager Isaac Butman.
I'm in council, I will try to be brief. So this is on second reading. We made the changes you were asked for, so we changed serration, there were some scrivener's errors there. And we adjusted the language about exemptions to make sure that L M Ts who are naturally receiving a background check as they are renewing their licenses are exempt as long as they have an valid license. And it was also brought to my attention today that there was another scrivener's error. As we said, we took this ordinance from another jurisdiction and changed it to our needs. I mistyped a licensed massage technician, which is an old term from the eighties, instead of therapist. I don't believe it's material to or changes the intent or the purpose. So I don't know that we need to go back to a second reading, I think that's up to here, but we just want to change it to massage therapist, so everything's consistent.
Okay, just to, just for the record, this is, we had a first reading and then we had a second first reading. We're both had public comment, a public hearing open to the public. And now we are now on to second reading and possibly approval or not. You have any more information on the changes?
Nope, those were the only changes that were made, we did receive a number of public comments today, you have copies of those. And those, that's all we did was exactly what we asked.
So we've already had a motion and a second, and we're at that point in discussion. Any more discussion? We did receive a letter today. That person is not here to present at all, are they, Isaac, the Adam St Pierre? Oh.
Yeah, he sent a letter as well.
Okay. Any help of the other question, discussion? Peter?
You could reopen it to public testimony if you wanted to do that.
To listen to this letter, to have him come up, we would need to reopen public.
Now, we've, we're already through our first reading, so, you know, the testimony was provided. We've had two public hearings on this already. But if you guys want to receive additional information, you can, we are on the second reading, though.
Good with that, okay, I'm, I'm also good with that. And so now we'll reopen the public hearing to any people that want to discuss items that are on the agenda, specifically the ordinance. Ordinance nine ten, specifically to that one at this time. Adam, if you'd like to step up, state your name and city of residence?
Adam St Pierre, I own a home here in Scott Pus. You know, you guys received my letter, you've obviously seen what I have to say. I think there's already laws on the books, I think this is a predatory attack against the Asian business owners. I don't think that this is anything we need, as our, you know, chief has already said, there's pending investigations, they have stuff going on. I don't think this is anything we need, we're opening a Pandora's box here of, anytime we don't like anything, we can, you know, have a law that goes into play or a ordinance that goes into place that could make it a predatory thing. We, the state of Oregon, have just spent a hundred and fifty years removing, you know, predatory language, racist language from our constitution. And I don't think us as a community need to put that back in there. You know, the media's already painted Columbia County as a racist place, look at the stuff they talk about on the TV, how when sports teams play here, they get called racist, you know, names and stuff like that. We're going to open that right back up and, you know, when we pass an ordinance that could be seen as a racist against Asian or bigoted against Asian businesses, you know, they are over, they have a higher percentage of people in the massage industry, they're seven point five percent of the massage industry, they're only four point five percent of the population. That, they're overachievers, they're, they're there, whether it's for good or bad, but there's already laws on the books, as Tyler Miller just stated, there's laws. They're there, we can follow them and pursue it that way. Do I want illicit business in my community? No, I do not, but I don't think we should deny anybody the opportunity to open a business. Thank you, councilors, for your time.
You. Alicia, would you like to step up?
Hey, my name's Alicia Higas of Scott Pus. I think there's something that should be noted, Mr. Adam St Pierre is associated with Pure Massage. He did electrical work for them on their behalf on a personal level, not through his employer. He came into my business to do this, some of this work. He did not call or, he just intruded and, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm feel very concerned that somebody is opposing this, especially considering on a personal and professional level as an electrician, it does not affect him. And he was over in Pure Massage a number of times prior to them getting their business license. And he was very well aware of what was going on. I have been personally lied to by him about electrical work. He confirmed that I had been paying for other people's electricity. And he told me that he was going to disconnect the power that goes upstairs to the tenants, residential tenants upstairs, from my meter. It's not associated to my breaker box, I have no way of turning it off. He did not do that, even though he told me that he was. So I find his character very questionable, and I think that his statement should be taken with a grain of salt.
Mayor? Yes.
Alicia, for the record, can you, and for the people that are listening that were not here last time, can you please establish what your relationship is to the area there?
I'm, I'm a massage therapist of eighteen years. I opened Scott Pus Massage in July of twenty twenty one. And when Pure Massage started renting space in December of twenty twenty one, there was a list of electrical problems that the county was involved in. And the massage business of Pure Massage was my next door neighbors. We share the same landlord. And the electrical was not properly separated. So he had to come over to my business to separate some of the outlets from Pure Massage's business. And then he also, at that time, confirmed that I was also paying for tenants upstairs. I'm sorry, I kind of went off a little bit on that, but basically, Pure Massage is my next door neighbors. We have the same landlord.
Just for the record, Pure Massage was never given a business license in Scott Pus. Wanted to note that, they never received.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to discussion, council discussion. Any other public comment, anyone online on the ordinance? I intend. I think I've heard enough to move on to council discussion. Anybody have any other information?
I think you keep it short, because there were some accusations made there, and so I don't have a problem with him making a short statement, but I don't want to get into a, an argument either, you know, we're just listening.
My, my urge.
There's, I mean, I think we want to avoid a lot of back and forths.
Okay, we're good. Okay. And we're discussing the ordinance itself, not any personal issues here. So I think we've, we've had a first and a second, we've had discussion after, and two public hearings and reopen another public comment.
I'm sure to how to handle this, there's some comments online about what just happened, do you want me to write them in the record or read them?
I mean, do we, do we usually take comments online and?
The chat is an open forum.
No.
We don't usually, I don't.
You know, this is, this is not about, this ordinance is not about a business. This is about, this is about a category. It is something that we did in consultation with the district attorney's office, it's something that we did in consultation with the Oregon Massage Board. It's something that we're now in a third meeting discussing. It is neutral as to race and any other, any other protected status. And it will, like any of our ordinances, will be applied consistently across a category. So I think I would just leave it at that.
President Grayson?
Mr. Mayor, if there is anyone online that's interested in making an official public comment stating their name and residence for the record, and we set the timer for five minutes, and they'd like to keep it general as Adam did to the ordinance and what the ordinance speaks about, then I think that, I don't think we need to read the chat, I don't think, I mean, but if those people would like to comment in general about this ordinance, then this is kind of the last chance to make that public comment.
I agree, so I mean, hands up then if you, if you did want to speak on where the other, but speak, anybody interested in that? Okay. Think I'm, we're ready to vote? First and second and discussion, any other discussion before I move to vote? Okay, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. New business. Have a denial of business registration for Lulu Massage LLC. Peter Watts, would you have any information on that?
Sure. We had received a application for a business license in December for Pure Massage. That application for a business license was denied. The applicant was provided with our code sections related to an appeal. They provided notice that they were appealing it. I was in contact with their attorney, and ultimately they withdrew that appeal. Then on December twenty second, so in just getting into our code and the business license, under code section five point four zero point zero nine zero six F, if someone, if a business license is applied for and is denied, then reapplication can't happen for ninety days. So there's a ninety day period where there can't be a reapplication. So we then on, we then got a, a application again for Pure Massage. It was at the same address, it offered the same services. It had the same name, but the applicant was different. And so the question became, okay, is this, is this a new license? Or is this a continuation of the old one, which is time barred? So in looking at the three factors, is the same was the same, services were the same, location was the same, different applicant. If you think of that as a bundle of sticks, three out of those four sticks were the same. And so my interpretation was it would be time, it would be, it would be barred. Otherwise, you could just, if someone got denied, they could just have someone else, you know, apply. So then on January third, we got an application for Lulu Massage. It was the same address as the Pure Massage. It was the same services being offered. It was the same applicant that had applied the second time, but a different name. So I try and be as consistent as possible in legal interpretations. So in that instance of the quote unquote bundle of sticks, we had three of the factors that were the same as the most current application. So I believed that it should be denied. We then on, under our code, people have fifteen days in order to appeal. That happened, and that's why we're here tonight. Because ultimately, while people may respect my opinion on code interpretation, you as the city council are the body that are entitled to vast deference in your, in your interpretation. So if you believe that, if you believe that having three out of those four factors constitutes the same business, then again, that would be time barred. And that's, I guess, you would deny this appeal. If, if you didn't, if you believe that any change constituted a new business, then I guess you could overrule this appeal, at which point they would get the, the business license. And the last thing, so that we know how this works going forward, is my position would be that each new application resets that ninety day period. So it was, we were not going from the first rejection, we're going from the most recent rejection. So when we're calculating time, we would be calculating off of that date for the ninety days. If you guys could provide me with clarification on that, it would be helpful, because I want to avoid any confusion as far as when the, the new day, the ninety day period will run.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's my interpretation that the ninety days would start after the last denial, the most recent denial of, of a business application, business license application. So I believe I'm interpreting it the same way you are.
And, and we want to give the, the applicant has a representative who's joining us by phone, and we want to give that representative the opportunity to explain why the, the code inter, my code interpretation is incorrect. I assume that's their position.
Yes.
I just have a question, what is the intent, what is the purpose of the ninety day waiting period? Beginning?
Probably just they don't want someone to get denied and then to continually be getting business licenses. We don't have a fee for business licenses, so if staff's constantly having to process them, I think that might be an issue. But I'm speculating because I don't know, that's been in our code for a long time.
Okay. There's no more discussion? Ed?
I just want to say that whether we think the ninety days is an appropriate day or not, that's the rubric we're using tonight in making this decision. If we, you know, at a later council meeting would like to have that come before us, that's when that can be changed, but we have to use what's already in place.
Right, the, the, all parties are, it's, in the land use context, a fixed goalpost rule, but that would be true of here. It's under the code that was in place at the time of the application.
Mayor? I, I understand the relevance, I'm not questioning that, I just, before we get to the conversation about when the ninety days starts over, I think first it's key to understand what the intent of the days is, if we are going and talking about that. But I understand that that's what's in place now and that's what we use, I understand that, and thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Watts? Okay, so let's move on to the appeal. And you have a representative then online that would like to speak?
The applicant indicated that Al Orem would be the representative on the call to answer questions.
Just to make sure everyone has a letter from Lu in front of them. And Al, if you're there, you'd like to speak?
Yes, I would, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the council. There is a slight discrepancy in the way that There is a slight discrepancy in the way that, uh, the, uh, second appeal was, was presented, according to whoever that was that was speaking. We provided the business plan that detailed a, a totally different business than just massage. Uh, our business is not about massage, it's about holistic approach. Uh, we employ licensed massage therapists, uh, as well as acupuncturists and mindfulness counselors to provide a whole, uh, whole person approach. And that business plan was presented in the appeal. So the gentleman that was speaking before that said that, uh, the business was essentially the same, uh, was, uh, a little in error. Do you all, have you all received, um, my wife's letter to you? Unfortunately, she couldn't be here. Her brother was injured in a work-related incident, uh, in Southern California, and she had to leave unexpectedly. So she apologized. So we put together a letter, uh, from her for, for your benefit.
We do have the letter.
Okay, um, is, would that be read aloud, or it doesn't matter?
You would like to read parts of it? I mean,
It's up to you, sir.
We've all read it. Um, it's the same letter, assuming, so I think we've all read it.
Just, it was sent just today.
Yes, yeah, we all had it in our packet in our email.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, if you have anything you specifically would like to say that you would like the public to hear, or you would like it to officially be on the record, this would be an opportunity for you to verbally say some of those things. So we're not, you know, we're not going to limit you on what you can or cannot say. We have the letter in front of us, but if there's something specific that you'd like to call out, um, just for people in the audience or people listening or who will watch back that you think is important for them to know, now would be your time.
Okay, great, and, and I appreciate that. I, I think the big, one of the first things I want to do upfront is, is that we are in total support and agreement with, uh, the, the, um, spirit and intent of, of Ordinance 910. You know, we, we support where it's going. You know, maybe the, the, the price on, um, legitimate LMTs might be a little onerous, but, um, you know, um, those are things that sometimes businesses have to endure. That being said, um, you know, I've been involved, I was involved with, uh, with Hong Liu for, for three years before we got married. Uh, I've done intense background with her and spoken with many of her previous employers. You know, this is a woman who has, who is an impeccable character. She was a little deceived when she wanted to, uh, purchase, uh, Pure Massage and, um, and in that regard, uh, applied under the, the same name. Um, a, and that was, uh, an error in judgment on, you know, on her and our part for not looking deep into it. As I dug deep, as we dug deeper into it and we heard the discussions in the last meeting and, uh, you know, uh, the things that the, that the Chief of Police offered, uh, we did a little bit more investigation. Our intent is not to take over the same business. Our intent is to occupy the space and provide a legitimate holistic, uh, therapeutic, uh, experience. Hong Liu has, in her career, has heard secondhand a lot of things that, uh, you're talking about. And, um, and unfortunately, uh, most of it is centered in the Asian massage business. Uh, you know, I'm married to a, you know, to a, a Chinese, uh, person who came here on political asylum and suffered significant brutalities from the Chinese government, a, and I interact a lot with the Asian community. I will say that, yeah, there are some, there are some characters who play dirty. But, but there are a lot of honorable people. And, you know, my wife is one of them. She's been operating, uh, out of our home for the last, uh, year and a half, and, uh, the business has continued to thrive. But, uh, you know, she's in a position to where she wants her own business in her own building. So, um, I guess, I guess that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Miller?
Uh, Mr. Orem, this is, uh, Counselor Miller. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, sir. Thank you.
I would like to step through a couple of things with you, if it's okay. Um, on the, uh, City of Scapoose 2021 application for city business registration, it says the number of full-time employees, it says two. Um, you explained earlier that there was going to be, in, in the business plan that you cited, that there was going to be other services. So were those services going to be provided by only two people?
At the beginning, yes. So I think you understand probably how, uh, business development grows, uh, with regards to customer base. So the initial, um, uh, intent was to have, have two. Uh, one would be a massage therapist, the other an acupuncturist. Uh, I am, um, a mindfulness counselor, and so my services, of course, wouldn't be considered as an employee. But we intend, we intend, you know, uh, if projections are correct and, and our business model moves forward, then of course, the employee base would probably increase.
Okay, thank you. So I, earlier you had said that, uh, um, Ms. Liu was operating out of your residence. I'm looking at the State of Oregon Bo, uh, Board of Massage Therapists that has an address of 610 Hawthorne Avenue. But it, do you mind explaining what that address is?
610 Hawthorne? No, I'm not aware of that. Where is 610?
You can.
In what, in what, in what city?
That was, uh, my misunderstanding, sir. That's actually the issuing agency that's on there. But I would like to ask you about the, uh, the 20925 Sage Creek Drive in Bend.
Yes. That's our residence.
Okay, right, thank you. And so is it fair to say that you're pretty familiar with, um, I don't want to, I don't know if calling it your wife's business is, uh, proper because it looks like you're also listed on the business license for the City of Bend?
Yeah, I am, I'm essentially a, the business manager. I take care of finances and so forth, but she, she runs the, the business.
Okay, thank you. Do you know an Andy, I'm going to spell the last name here so I don't mispronounce it. It's H like Henry, U A N like Nancy, G.
Okay, say again?
Do you know somebody by the name of Andy, I believe it's pronounced Hong, H U A N G?
Uh, name doesn't sound familiar, no. I do remember that there was an Andy listed in the, the Police Chiefs report in, uh, the 901 presentation last time.
Okay, so you're not aware then of any affiliation between your wife, Lu Hong and, or Hong Liu, sorry, and, uh, Mr. Hong, Andy Hong, H U A N G?
I, I am not aware, no.
Okay, so you're not familiar then with, um, does this ring a bell at all? Hong Liu was issued a letter of concern with her license, was displayed in an unpermitted facility in Bend, Oregon, owned by Andy Hong, H U A N G?
Okay, state that again, that she was issued a le, there's, there's no letter associated with her, uh, massage therapist's license?
Yeah, I'm reading the report here, sir, and it says Hong Liu was issued a letter of concern with her license.
From whom?
License was displayed in an unpermitted facility in Bend, Oregon, owned by Andy, H U A N G?
From whom?
I believe it was the City of Bend who issued that letter. I will, uh, come back to that for clarification. It says that, uh, again, I don't know how to pronounce his name. H U A N G was cited, has been cited numerous times, most recently fined by the Massage Board for $27,000.
Uh, and like I said, until we read the, the, uh, presentation from the Chief of Police, um, in the last 901 presentation, we, we really had no idea of any of the, those investigations. What's the date of that letter? What's the date of that letter?
I don't see that in the report that I have, sir. I'll try to get that information for you, um, shortly here. So I just want to be clear.
I can tell you, okay, so let me clarify here. You know, as stated in her letter, you know, she, she worked in a, uh, in several massage businesses. Um, I don't know how many he owns or where they are. She personally has never received any official notification. And if so, if it would have been such a notification, it would have been forwarded to the Oregon Board of Massage Therapists. And her, uh, record says that it, uh, that there are no complaints. But having said that, she did work in a facility, uh, uh, short-term that is now called Emerald Massage. What the name was before, I don't know. But she left there, uh, to, to come to work in, at home.
Okay, and the cross-connect here is, uh, Pure Massage, which, um, if I'm tracking all this correctly, sorry, there's a lot of information here to absorb, which is the business that your wife is, is buying.
No, no, she's not going to buy, and let me clarify that. Is it, that was the way it was intended, she was going to buy the business? But we're not going to buy, she's not going to buy that name. You know, she, we want a business license for her business. And, um, and we've already spoken with the, um, with the landlord, and if we can get a business license approved, then he will tran, he will terminate these. By the way, according to him, there are already eviction orders in place for the current owner, who, can't remember that person's name, and the other massage therapist that spoke earlier.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. I, I guess more to my point here is, is that this, uh, report that I'm looking at says the owner of the current or past Pure Massage, I don't know if it's, is a clear, or excuse me, um, still in business. It says, uh, the owners are Tang and a male subject that I referenced earlier with the last name of H U A N G. So I guess what my, my question is, is there's a lot of, well, it's not really my question, it's my, it's my understanding here and reading everything in front of me that there's a lot of, uh, connection in between Mr. Um, H U A N G and what? And the issue is, is that male subject has been fined multiple times to the extent of $27,000.
Say, say that last part again.
The male subject with the last name of H U A N G has been cited multiple times to the tune of, what I'm reading, $27,000.
Okay, and, you know, and I appreciate that and support it. If, uh, if those, uh, activities were in fact, uh, illicit or against the law, uh, that has nothing to do with the business that we're opening. There's no association with Lulu Massage or, and any of those people.
I, I understand you're telling us that, sir, but unfortunately, the information that I'm looking at shows that there's a lot of connection in between your wife and the, uh, subject that's been issued, or excuse me, fined over $27,000.
A lot of, a lot of connections being in one letter.
Uh, no, I'm looking at a report, sir.
Okay, this report specifically states, uh, my wife's name in connection with, with whatever the guy's name is?
Yes, sir, it does.
Can I be provided with a copy of that report?
I'm sure that you can get a copy, sir. My, what I'm trying to flush out here is what the connection is, if any, in between, uh, your wife and this.
And I will jump in, I will jump in and say, uh, it is, it is well, it is very well-known that a number of Chinese people, uh, have taken advantage of a lot of different, uh, opportunities and loopholes in order to, um, you know, have businesses. If, I'm not aware, you know, and, and I've, I've, you know, I've, I've done, I keep really current on her life from the Oregon Board, and there's nothing of any complaints with the Oregon Board. I have three recent emails from them stating there have been no complaints lodged against her. Now, if her, if her license was posted in a business that ended up having a, a citation, you know, I, I really can't speak to that.
I, I understand, I appreciate that. I, I just have one, um, question right now. What is the attraction to Scapoose? Did I hear correctly that you live in Bend?
Say again?
I said, what is, uh, I'm just curious, what is the attraction to Scapoose? What, what, uh, what got your interest in Scapoose to open a business? I heard you earlier say, uh, that you live in Bend, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, and, you know, we do, um, my, like I said, my wife's dream has been to have, you know, her own business in, in a facility. And, uh, you know, we do constant looking and looking for opportunities. Um, we also, uh, have a, a company that does a lot of market surveys for us, and, uh, we, we saw a great opportunity, and we saw the potential, you know, to, to buy a business and occupy in Scapoose.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Uh, our Chief of Police is on the line. He can't raise his hand because he's on the phone. I believe he's the lone phone number up there. I've been informed that he does wish to speak.
Yes, I was going to kind of ask, is there any information, Steve Lugall, that you can provide?
Hi, Mayor. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize for my, uh, lack of video presence. To Councilman Tyler's, uh, question, it was OBMT case 3137, May of 2020. Her license was found posted at a facility owned by Andy in Bend, Oregon. She was not present at the time of the investigation, but was given a letter of concern, advising her that her, her license was observed in an illegal facility. If that clears that up.
Can I ask, did, what name of the facility was it? Do we know that?
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also curious, um, why the OBMT, if you, if you research her license, it comes up and it says that there, there are no problems with the license, there's no issues.
Uh, that would be a question for the Massage Board. I would imagine that because it's a letter of concern and not discipline, they might be two separate issues. And Mayor, no, I do not have which facility, but I know Andy had several down in Bend.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Orem, does, I mean, you had said Emerald Spa or Emerald Miss Spots?
No, Elegant.
Elegant. You had said Emerald because, yeah.
Elegant.
Not affiliated with Green Spa or Lotus Spa?
They are not. You can, you can look them up. There's nothing on them. Just a lot of positive reviews. And she wasn't there very long and, and, uh, decided that she wanted to work on her own. And that's why we, you know, she opened up the business in home. Fully licensed.
Council President Grayson.
No complaints.
Um, I just, this is Council President Grayson. My colleague here, Counselor Tyler Miller, had asked you a couple of questions of your wife's knowing or relationship with, um, this, this man Andy, who seems to own quite a few businesses. It, it seems a red flag to me, um, that your wife was working in an establishment that she didn't know was even permitted, um, or even had a business license. And then again, uh, the same thing here in Scapoose, um.
Oh, wait, 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 she didn't work, she did not work in, in a, like, in Scapoose.
My, my connection to that is, is this man Andy. And he is the previous owner of Pure Massage, and she's taking over that. There's multiple connections here in this report between the two of them. And so I'm just, um, quite confused, um.
Well, you know, I can say that the, the, the Chinese network, you know, is very broad, and a lot of people own many different businesses. I can tell you that, um, most, most, and they're, and they're nearly all women. Most women who go to work, uh, at massage places, um, aren't, they don't take the opportunity to look and see, uh, you know, what the license status is of the facility. You know, they're looking at, uh, providing a service for somebody and, and getting paid for that. That's, you know, that's what their direction is. Now, maybe in the United States, you know, we, we might want to dive that deep into things, but you understand, you know, that, uh, there are different customs and different understandings. The fact that she may have been, may have worked at a place, uh, that was Um, the fact that she may have been, may have worked at a place, uh, that was owned by the, this Andy person, and that got into trouble, you know, it's, it's not surprising because there's a large network out there. But we're not part of that network. You know, she is a complete individual, she's operated on her own for a year now. And, um, uh, you know, insisting on fully licensed, uh, therapists, um, she takes great pride in what she does. I mean, you can try to connect any dots that you want to, but somewhere along, somewhere along, you have to draw a line that separates a, um, you know, a, a honest and persevering person, uh, from what may have been, uh, dotted lines in the past.
Thank you, uh, President, Council President Grayson.
Thank you for that, I completely empathize with your statement, um, knowing that this industry can be quite difficult, or that, you know, these assumptions would be put on or portrayed um, onto all individuals. Um, Counselor Miller had asked, you know, of, of your residence, and that it said Bend, and you guys live in Bend. Um, what is, i- is the intention of, of your wife to run this business? Will she be here every day, or does that, you know, that, in my mind, if not, that leaves it open to who would be um, overseeing this business daily?
That's, that is an awesome question, I'm glad we're getting back to the, you know, to the real point of, of where we should be. Um, I am, I'm retired Air Force. Uh, I'm, I'm retired, Social Security, I'm still working and ready to retire from a third op, uh, uh, occupation. We're ready to settle down somewhere. And, um, we fully intend that if this business license is approved, uh, we fully intend to relocate, you know, uh, up to that neck of the woods, and she will be managing that. The business, you know, I mean, she will be managing the, uh, the therapeutic side, uh, and I will be the financial and business manager. We will be in Scappus.
Thank you.
Sir Holmes.
Yeah, um, thank you for showing up tonight and, um, helping us understand some of this background. I wanted to look back at, um, the comments around the purchase of Pure Massage. Um, could you revisit that for me? Did you say that you had explored purchasing Pure Massage, but that was no longer something you are pursuing?
Um, she saw an opportunity to get a business for, of her own. And she was, at the time, she was in the, in negotiations with the owner, and I don't know what her name is, but, but, um, she was in negotiations with her to purchase the, the entire business. Uh, that would, you know, be all the furnishings, all the supplies, uh, and everything, uh, in the business. Um, being a little naive in that area, and I will admit that, uh, I wasn't, I didn't do my due diligence that, that I should have to, to support her. Uh, we were not aware of all the issues, and so she just opted to say, hey, well, I'll just buy, uh, Pure Massage. Uh, when the first rejection came back, um, and, and we got, uh, what was interesting is our rejection came back with an email saying that the police chief had, had rejected it. I specifically asked, um, the city manager for reasons. And three times I asked for reasons, and three times she declined to answer. Uh, you know, so we could, we had no idea what those reasons were. It wasn't until the, the, the nine oh one meeting that you guys had last time, where we sat in and we listened to everything, then we started doing some digging, and, you know, we, we had, we had already then applied, uh, as Lulu Massage to separate ourselves, figuring that, hey, we don't wanna be Pure Massage, we wanna be Lulu Massage. And that was why she submitted the, the second, um, uh, application. And then that was just arbitrarily denied because, as the gentleman earlier said, he tried to put a bunch of sticks together, and someone was stuck on the wall. And, uh, so they just denied it, you know, thinking that it was going to be illicit because it was Asian. So, you know, all I can say is, the original intent was to buy a business and build that business to be a, a legitimate and, uh, you know, a therapeutic, uh, operation. So now, uh, we just need to draw a line, you know, on the Pure Massage issue, uh, or whatever relevance somebody can try to dig up, showing that an Asian person, you know, happened to work at a building that was operated and owned by somebody else. You know, they just don't look that deep into things, they were looking for work. And so now, the decision before us is, she has, she, we've been operating in a legitimate business. We want to move that business to a permanent facility, and that facility is in Scappus. And so we're looking for, uh, a little bit of, uh, uh, you know, it's interesting, going back to the lady that testified earlier about, you know, what can the, how, how can the communicate, the, the community, um, interreact with the council? And the other gentleman said, well, you know, we really can't take, uh, emotions into, into, uh, account. We have to deal strictly with the law. Well, sometimes, you know, you have to just decide within yourself, are you willing to draw a line, uh, regardless of the person's past? I remember the discussion last time where the, um, the council was talking about the, the changes, and the, the gentleman that was doing the readings, um, you know, he, somebody asked him, uh, why can't we be more specific on some of the requirements in, in here about background checks, and what's gonna be rejected and so forth? You know, and this gentleman said it very, absolutely perfectly. Why do we wanna paint somebody into a corner? You know, there might be opportunities for people who may have been either associated, associated with unknowingly or even knowingly, but they decide to change direction, you know, and become a productive and, and, and honest member, you know, uh, of the community. And I just, I don't know, I, I guess I get a little frustrated, uh, that, that people do such deep dives on the stuff that they, they can't, uh, you know, they can't, they can't separate the, you know, the fog from the clouds.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I just, yeah, um, I guess just following up, um, you know, what you're offering as a point of clarification isn't necessarily consistent with what was submitted to council today by your wife, who does say that I was and still am in negotiation to, to purchase the business operation known as Pure Massage, so it is a little bit difficult to tease apart.
That, that, that is true, uh, that is true. But, uh, that means that we want to be able to purchase everything that's in the building. Uh, the business company, you know, the business has a lot of assets. Uh, and if we can purchase those things, uh, at, uh, at a negotiable price, then, uh, it's easier for us rather than having to spend, you know, twenty five to thirty thousand dollars to furnish a massage business.
Sir Watts. Yeah, I, I just wanted to clear up a couple of things, um, certainly things that have been said about me, um, and about the application. So, under the commercial business license, which is on page thirty of your packet, it says, give a description of the business to be conducted in the building, and it says, massage therapy and reflexology. So it's not mindfulness, it's the exact same services that were previously, um, uh, previously described in the Pure Massage application. And that's why, as I looked at the factors, I came to the conclusion that they were offering the same services. If you look down to the next section of Lulu Massage, it says, what was the previous occupancy classification, and that's three oh four, Group B. What is the proposed occupancy classification that says Group three oh four, Group B? So it's the exact same building code classification and the exact same, um, exact same description of the services provided. Um, I, I remember, I remember our contact over this application very differently, in that it was, it was rejected, it's the same business applying, it hasn't been ninety days, there it is, then again, um, the name changes, nothing else changes, it hasn't been ninety days. Uh, if, if the, if there had been no application since the first application, and, you know, March came around, and we got a completely different application, then we wouldn't be in that ninety day threshold. So this, in my mind, isn't about whether anything that could happen is nefarious or not, it's not about any of that, it's that how are we going to interpret our code? Um, you know, I gave it my best crack, I could be wrong, I, I sometimes am. Um, but this will help set the precedent for, uh, future applications, and ultimately, you as the council are, are the ones that get to interpret your code. Um, and so it wasn't throwing sticks against the wall. Um, I, that's not how I view my interpretation of the law. Um, but, um, reasonable minds can differ. And, and again, I just, to some of the inconsistencies that have already been, um, pointed out, there's no affiliation with Pure Massage, there's no desire to buy Pure Massage. Pure Massage is done, that's a bright line, that's what we heard. And then, and then, you know, obviously, we received something that says, you know, that there are ongoing negotiations to purchase the business operation. That, a business operation is an equipment. I mean, that's just, that's not how I would interpret, uh, interpret a business operation. Um, it's not, we're buying a desk. It's buying a business operation, this is a business license. There are, our thing tonight is what constitutes the business, and they're buying a business operation, that business operation was rejected.
So, excuse me, sir, did you in fact read the business plan that we submitted with the application?
I, I, I looked at the license.
No, I'm talking about the business plan that we submitted with the application, that goes into detail about what our services will provide.
I, I haven't seen one.
Uh, interesting, it was provided to the city manager?
No, it was not. Um, I also, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just, I, I, I do wanna go back to what's actually on the application, cuz that's what we're looking at tonight. And as our legal counsel had just mentioned, number one says, give a description of your business to be conducted in the building. And it only says massage therapy and reflexology, which can't be denied that that was in the previous application that had been submitted sooner before, you know, the ninety days, and now we're already seeing it again. So, I just want you to know that that is exactly what it says in, in, in the license, in, in the application that was submitted for this business. And that the classification for the business is the exact same of what was the previous to what you plan now. Even though in this meeting, you have said that there's going to be some other elements, that is not captured, um, in the application. I just want you to know that the application is what we're looking at. We're, we're not, we're just trying to understand what you're saying versus what we're seeing. So I appreciate your patience with all the questions that we have.
I appreciate your comments, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Q.
I think if we don't, didn't get a copy of your, uh, business plan, uh, maybe that information was included in that, we just didn't get a chance to see it. Uh, I don't know what happened, but there's some disconnect there with that. And, uh, so, I, I didn't get the feeling when you spoke earlier that the mindfulness part of what you do was gonna be part of this operation at all. I think you'd said that it probably wouldn't be, at least the beginning. And, uh, so you had no connection at all with any of the services that were being offered by Pure Massage when we went through all those, you know, identified all those problems, that was nothing to do with, with you or your wife, or any business connections that you had with any of that operation? Is that correct?
That, that statement is correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Lugall, do you have any more comments or anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I would just like to add that, um, I'm not questioning her honorableness. This is not discriminatory or anything, it's based on the facts. And, you know, when you look over her letter to the, um, council tonight, she is massaged in Florida, Texas, Oregon, New Mexico, um, I mean, in California. That, to me, i- is a red flag. And the simple fact the board noted early, that she does know Andy hung. And that there was some type of relationship.
Why is that a red flag if somebody's trying to, uh, improve their situation? You know, just, just because, uh, your, um, uh, little world, you know, of, i- if somebody moves a lot, then you're not gonna hire them when you're looking at their resume? You know, that notion is passed, you know, that's archaic, you know?
So, Al, she's licensed in those states, then does she practice in those states?
She practiced for a short, short term in Florida. By the way, before she started practicing, she applied for a license so that she would be licensed. Okay, and the same thing was in Texas. Before she started practicing in Texas, while she was in massage school, by the way, paying it for herself by cleaning rooms, um, she, uh, had applied for and got a license. So the fact that somebody moves from one location to another, uh, to do the job that they're being compensated for, uh, just because it happens to have the preface of massage in front of it, we're gonna arbitrarily say that that resume is gonna be rejected? You know, I hire and fire five hundred people over the last five years. You know, I don't look at resumes for how many people, how many times people change jobs. I look at their qualifications.
Correct, and that's why we're looking at just this application at this time. And, um, do you have anything else before we close, uh, discuss?
No, I, the last thing I wanna say is I wanna go back to, uh, the gentleman who spoke last session. You know, when he was asked, you know, to narrow down the decisions to, um, you know, on background checks and to move, and to move for approval. You know, I'm not going to say that, that there was or was not any connection, uh, you know, between, uh, my wife and the people that you're talking about. But even if, and I say even if, that was the case, then I defer to the gentleman who spoke last week, who said, hey, you know, we're, we're not gonna hold somebody accountable for everything that happened in the past. Some people draw a line in the sand and move forward, you know? And so all I ask is that the council give a little discretion, uh, you know, to an opportunity, uh, for somebody, you know, to, to realize their dream that they have been searching for for five years since they left, uh, Communist China, uh, after being beaten numerous times.
I can definitely appreciate that, Al. Um, any more staff comments, anything, anything else online? Are you looking at the application? Um, I mean, are we looking at the ninety day stamp, um, when that went into effect? Whether we are still within those ninety days? That's what we're looking at?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at whether this is the same, um, business as the business that was rejected in, um, in late December.
Yes.
And then, i- if it is the same business, then how do we calculate the ninety day period to inform Al, um, and anyone affiliated with the business when it would be appropriate to apply?
And I think we've established it's not the same business.
Um. Mayor?
Yeah, Council Miller.
Sorry, um, I have a question for Chief Lugall, if he's still on. Um, I can, I, I wanna make sure that I heard correctly, and, and I wanna make sure it's clear why I'm making this connection, um, because if, if, um, the applicant is connected to, um, the other gentleman that we kept referring to, I think there's more of a nexus in between, um, there's more of a nexus to deny, well, or on the ninety day clause part, because it's basically the same, um, person or service. Did I hear correctly that, um, Wu Hong is associated in some way to the, um, male subject with the twenty seven thousand dollars worth of fines in other states?
Sir, that, um, that is just his most recent fines. He has been disciplined by the Massage Board, um, hold on, let me bring it up, cuz I'm trying to stay on track here. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen times with the Massage Board. with the massage board, the $27,000 fine being the most recent. Her association with him is a result of OBMT case 3137, May of 2021, and she received a letter of concern, which may be different than anything, like it may not rise to the level of being posted on their website. That would be a massage board question.
Okay, and as far as, in your, uh, in your, uh, investigation, Chief Lugall, I can't remember what you said, I'm sorry. Um, did you say that there is connection in other states?
No.
No, not, not, not other connections and, uh, nothing illicit, just that she is licensed in numerous other states. That was my only comment.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Did you say that she was connected to problems in other states?
No.
Sir, no, he did not. That's what I was trying to clarify to make sure that I heard correctly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And so just to clarify mine, the December application is registered as Pure Massage with very similar terminology all throughout other than different, uh, person on the application.
Yeah, and you have to appreciate that a lot of the application process is dropdowns. So, you know, it gives you the choice to, you know, select certain ordinances. But, you know, how it's listed, I don't know. It, I'll, I'll leave it to your, uh, discretion. Just frustrated.
We're, we're, uh, just for clarification, we're referring to our business license and it's just X lines, right? There's no dropdowns?
Correct. I don't think there are dropdowns in our specific form. So that's why I'm not sure what that reference was to, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm referring to the City of Scapus Commercial Business Inside City Limits questionnaire and the, uh, applica- excuse me, the 2020, excuse me, 2021 Application for City Business Registration.
You're obvious.
So we're all on the same page.
I don't have a copy of the December application, but it's.
Just have the most recent.
Well, do I have any, um, guidance here by council on how we want to proceed? Motion to?
This is a, this is a motion?
Motion to, um, regarding the appeal process. We're looking at Hong Liu's appeal. Voting on that.
So the motion then would be to either sustain the, the city's decision to reject the business license or to?
Yeah, if, if you believe that this business is the same as the business in, um, December and then in late December, her prior application, um, then you would, you would be sustaining the, uh, staff determination regarding the rejection. Um, if you, right, and, and then, so if, if you were to come to that conclusion, then I would also ask that you ha- uh, interpret the 90 days because we'd have to calculate it. If you do not believe this is the same business as the one that applied in late December, then, um, you know, you would be overruling our determination. Um, yeah, and they would get a license. Right? If, if it's, if it's sustained, they can reapply at the end of the 90 days.
Yes, Councilor McHugh. So if, if we deny it and they can reapply again, is that, is that what you're saying? And maybe we have more clarity at that time to?
Right. So the way that our code is set up, um, and I think that there's some confusion is that, um, it's 90 days from the, the rejection. So, um, if the rejection is, um, if, if there is, so the, the first question is, is it the same business as the one that previously applied? Um, if it is, then is the date that we're going off the most recent in time, which, uh, you know, tonight is the appeal, the appeal of the business license rejection? Um, or is it, is there some other way of calculating the 90 day period? Because the code doesn't really say. I, I don't think the code anticipated multiple applications in a, in the 90 day period. Um, so we need a little bit of guidance on that, too. And that's in the event that you believe this is the same business as the one, is her prior application in late December.
Yeah, and, and, and that was a negative interpretation. But go ahead.
What was the date on the December application?
Um, I think it was the 22nd of December.
Actually, I, I think it actually was in November because the, um,
Yeah.
It, the appeal was initiated and then withdrawn on December 5th. Um, December 19th, there was a second to re, yes, to reopen Pure Massage. Um, and that, again, that was time barred. And then the subsequent application was time barred as well under the 90 days, um, under the argument that they were essentially the same application. So that's really what we're talking about right now is the fact that it's time barred, not necessarily flat out denied. Under this particular, um, denial, they could apply again after 90 days once the time bar expires. But again, there was some question about the interpretation of when that clock started.
May, may I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, so i- if you determine that the new application is not the same business, then the initial rejection and denial was out of line because they denied it on a, um, assumption that it was the same business. So really the decision is, is this a new business or the same business? If you decide it's a new business, then the 90 day rule is out the window. You can approve the license tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate your interpretation of the license that you put in, but unfortunately I'm interpreting it as the same business due to it saying that it's massage therapy and reflexology under the same classification group, um, same location. Um, the only thing different from the previous application to this one is that you've chosen not to keep the name Pure Massage and change it to Lulu Massage. And for that reason, I'm not in favor of. I would, Mr. Mayor, just add to that in addition to everything that Lieutenant Grayson pointed out, there was confirmation that they are still in negotiations to purchase. So for that reason, I also interpret this as an application.
I see that in, in, to me in her mind, they still are the same operation, the same business, purchase it. So at that time, it is still one operation.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. McHugh, do you? I'd just like to say that's probably what my main concern is. You know, they, they're really not ready to make this move at this time. I think they've got to nail down that they're the owners of the business and have all those things ducks in a row and, uh, then back to us. I do have concerns that we maybe have some, uh, misunderstandings between the original group that was there and, uh, and, and, uh, and Long Liu. And I think that, uh, in fairness to them and their family, we, we need to acknowledge that and that, uh, you know, there's, these aren't the same people. And, uh, so if they come back again or whatever we decide to do, uh, you know, uh, if, if you're, if you're what you say you are, you're, you're certainly welcome in Scapus.
Mr. McHugh. Mr. Miller, you were, Miller?
Uh, yes, sir. I move that, uh, council deny, or excuse me, um, sustain the decision by staff to deny Lululemon Massage LLC Hong Liu business, uh, license based on the, uh, 90 day requirement. As council finds that, uh, there's too much of a nexus, it's the same business. I mean, Lulu Massage and Pure Massage LLC.
Okay, we now have a motion on the floor by Councilor Miller to, um, uphold the denial of the business license by staff. Bernie Second?
Second that?
For Home Seconds? Special counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to echo what Counselor McHugh is saying and that this evening there were a lot of additional questions that went beyond what the application actually was. Um, but it was our opportunity to speak to the applicant and understand the whole situation. We don't get that opportunity very often. So, um, we appreciate the applicant for being here this evening and, and, um, taking our questions head on. Um, but as Counselor McHugh said, you know, we have to look at what the application is presenting and that it's the exact same application as before in our interpretation and that in, in an additional 90 days, if this application looks different, then we're, you know, obviously willing to, to look at that. Um, and that, you know, we're not trying to push a certain demographic or a certain kind of people out of Scapus. Um, I just, again, as Counselor McHugh said, I just want to echo that because I think that's really important. As ordinance presented 910 prior to this and then this application tonight, it could look one way and, and I think that that is not our intention.
90 days from when?
We'll get to that in a minute, I think.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that, too. Um, I, you know, had a series of questions for, um, or, uh, for, for the applicant and?
Can't even remember name.
What I was trying to establish there is if the business is the same or not. That's what the intent of those questions were. You?
Thank you. Um, had a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor, stay by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed? Motion passes. Um, can we clarify the dates then? Is that 90 days began? And does that take time? You, you try to find or we trying to decide that? We'll decide.
That's what we'd like clarification of you on is when that 90 day clock starts.
Attorney? Is there a, this question is for, uh, the attorney. Is there a standard or a common practice, um, that you see across different cities? As far as, is it the time of application or date the application is received or at the time of denial?
You know, I, I think that it would be when it's, it's finally adjudicated. So I, my interpretation would be tonight it would start, that period would start tomorrow. It doesn't specify business days, it says days. So usually in my mind, that means calendar days. So it'd be, uh, 90 days, um, either tonight or, uh, from tonight or from tomorrow. I think those would be the two most common, uh, ways to calculate it.
So in most appeals, it's based on that, that resets a clock.
Why not the date of the denial?
That's my question since in your interpretation and, and background.
Well, I think that if it were the date of the denial, then, um, I, ultimately it's up to you guys to determine it. Um, I think that, uh, right, I mean, I just think that, um, if the, if the, it's the denial date, that would be January 24th, 2023. Um, it obviously were after that, um, by, um, they, I mean, they appealed.
Three weeks passed.
Yeah, they, they waited 14 days and, or around 14 days and, um, appealed and then we set this hearing. And that's when the final decision was made. Uh, because if you guys had said that the staff interpretation was incorrect, they would be getting their license tomorrow. Um, when business hours opened and you guys were the final decision maker in whether this had been rejected due to being time barred or not.
Here, when there's, uh, timelines that are imposed by, but I think of a specific example and I'm blanking on it, what do they usually go by? Is it the time of? I don't even have a good example, but hopefully.
I can give you an example. So I had 21 days to prepare our record for Luba. Um, that was 21, that 21 day period started, uh, the day after they mailed their, uh, notice of, um, notice of intent to appeal. And, um, they, I mailed out the record to all parties 21 days later. Uh, I think it was, if memory serves, that was a Tuesday. Had that been, had the 21st day been on, you know, um, had it been on a weekend or something like that, uh, or a holiday, um, Monday holiday, uh, it would have been the next business day. But if it falls on a, on a weekday, no holiday, then that's when it's due. Um, and that, that is oftentimes it'll be business days to avoid that problem. But our code just says days and so does the Landy Sport of Appeals. So we do it based on days.
In that case, you could do it earlier. That's, that's a different, um, you can do it sooner, but not, um, any later than 21 days.
Right. I mean, if, if it wasn't in 21 and they, everyone hadn't agreed to toll that clock, I would have been in trouble.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think my interpretation is that the business license was denied by staff. It was appealed and then the ultimate decision maker was us this evening. So in my personal opinion, the 90 days would start from tonight.
I think that puts some more teeth into the appeal process of it. They want to get to the 90 days sooner. They don't appeal, then it goes off the original denial date. I, what I'm interpreting. When, in the appeal, I, was there a timeline they had to appeal? How many days did they have to appeal?
It's, I think it's 15.
It's 15 days that the council has to hear the?
Yeah, we have to hear within 15.
Is there a time limit on the number of days for them to appeal?
Yeah, I think they have to do it within two weeks. They were definitely, they were a couple of days early, I want to say.
They were within the timeframe.
They were within timeframe, yeah.
Just seeing if people would wait till the last minute to do the appeal if there was a timeframe. Um, you know, does, if they know that it resets the clock, it may prevent or help them, make them do it sooner. Give some teeth to, uh, um, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, can you, I think you're seeing a lot of head nods, but just for the record, tell Peter exactly what?
Yeah, does this take a vote? Because I'm thinking then what I'm hearing is that we have timestamp it, um, tomorrow will be the start of the 90 days.
We don't need to do a vote as long as there's consensus. This is you guys just providing with some guidance on the code.
State, but that is, but we.
Starts on February 16th.
Okay. Reapply for a business license, it will be 90 days from the final verdict or denial decision, whether it's appeal or staff. It will start the next day, 90 day.
One is tomorrow.
One is tomorrow.
Thank you.
And it's calendar days.
Right.
Okay, um, thank you all. All we have on our agenda, do I need to go over calendar since it was a special meeting? Or we?
I don't think that we can cover that on, at the meeting on Tuesday.
Staff reports and everything, we'll wait till next Tuesday. Okay, meeting adjourned.